I'm not doing a film there. Once again, CCA has the full house.
Good afternoon. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I am Tyra Bataglia, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the March 12th, 2025 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We're also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Public participation will be held at approximately 5:15 PM. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the lobby and allowed to three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are at speaking and use your cards if you'd like to question or comment. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. So I have a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Dr. Malvo.
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Whistler. Any comments or revisions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And may I have an approval for, sorry, a motion for the unapproved Board Meeting Minutes for February 12th, 2025?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey. Second by Ms. Zimmer. Any comments or revisions?
Some were sent to Mrs. Lassito. So Andy, you, yeah, you revise those, okay?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I please have a motion for the unapproved Board Meeting Minutes for February 18th, 2025?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Whistler.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Dorsey.
And there was also a revision on that one. Just the one indicating, well, on the first page indicating that February 18th was a Tuesday that week, yes.
Okay. All right, may I please have all those in favor approving those minutes?
Aye.
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 And we will now move on to the Carroll County Student Government Report. Mr. Dean.
Thank you, Ms. Bataglia. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Mason Dean. I am a junior at Winters Mill High School and your Carroll County Student Government Association Vice President. On February 20th, CCSGA hosted the February General Assembly at Century High School. During this GA, students heard from Maryland Print House founder Andrew Boone, who spoke about his journey, and Ms. Bataglia on the Maryland Blueprint. There was also a primary election for the Carroll County Student Government, or excuse me, Student Representative on the Board of Education position. Candidates Olivia Pointsett from Westminster High School and Gabriella Tedeschi from Century High School were selected as the finalists. On February 27th, they participated in a question and answer session, and this video is available for high school students to watch and later vote on. Additionally, CCSGA officer applications were released and are due to Mr. Melhoron by Friday, March 21st. Interested students can speak to their advisor or find applications on our Instagram, carol.sga, once posted. Finally, on April 9th, CCSGA will be hosting its final general assembly of the 2025-2026, or excuse me, 2024-2025 school year at South Carroll High School. We look forward to hearing from our officer candidates and voting for next year's leadership. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. And we will now move on to Board Member Activities and Correspondence. And we will start down at the end with Dr. Malvo.
All right, so here's what was done. October 13th, I attended the Family Life Advisory Committee Meeting. On February 20th, I attended Gateway Schools Student Honor Roll Breakfast and congratulations to all of those students who made it to the honor roll and for the efforts of those parents and teachers that helped to get them there. On February 25th, I attended the Carroll County Education Association and Carroll Association of School Employees, or just CCEA in case, it's easy enough, Local Lobby Night. It was really helpful and it was a pleasure to sit down with CCPS teachers and staff and have extremely informative discussions. On March 4th, I attended the Teachers Blueprint Town Hall Meeting at the Carroll County Career and Tech Center hosted by Superintendent Dr. McCabe and Assistant Superintendent John O'Neil. Nick Shockney also shared information and expectations to come with Blueprint. In addition, it was extremely valuable to hear from the dozen or so teachers and committee members who asked questions and voiced their concerns about Blueprint. And I ask that everyone, Board Members, Commissioners, especially Community Members, to attend the next public town hall, I will make sure I'm there as well. And that will be April 2nd, 6 o'clock, at the Carroll County Tech Career Center, or Career and Tech Center. On March 6th, I was asked to serve as the guest speaker for the annual Murthy Real Global Education Leadership Lecture Series. This took place at the Community College of Baltimore County. This lecture series highlights international and global leaders in business, government, education, and other areas important to CCBC students, other counties, and faculty and community throughout the state. Also, on March 6th, I attended the Friendship Valley Elementary School Student Science Fair that evening, and the ingenuity of such young students was extremely impressive. I want to thank the Assistant Principal Brian Stojak for sharing this valuable event with me. And I do look forward to future visits to schools and events throughout the Carroll County, Carroll County Community. Thank you.
Do you have one of these?
I do not have.
Also, something else to share with you that's come to my attention. In terms of National Middle Level Education Month, National Middle Level Education Month is also observed in March. This is a time to recognize the importance of providing students in the middle grades with the support they need to succeed both academically and personally. The skills, habits, and values established during this time have a lifelong influence that directly impacts a student's chances for a successful and healthy future. Thank you to the administrators, teachers, and staff at our middle schools for all that they do for our students.
Okay, I'll start by sharing. This is Music in Our Schools Month. It's an opportunity for music teachers to bring their programs to the attention of the school and the community and to display the benefits that school music brings to students of all ages. Our schools are beginning their spring vocal and instrumental concerts, and we encourage members of the community to come out and show their support and enjoy some great music. And now for my activities for the month. On February 13th, the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce County Budget Update was presented. So I attended that annual county update that featured Ted Zaleski, our Director of Management and Budget for Carroll County Government. On the 14th, we had our Equity Council Meeting. Our committee reviewed information about the templates that our schools are using for equity plans, and I thank Dr. Moore for organizing and facilitating the meeting. That evening, I went to the Westminster High School at Winters Mill High School Boys varsity basketball game. It brought back a lot of memories, and I certainly enjoyed being there. February 18th, I again attended our budget meeting that we had here in the Board Office. On the 21st, I went to another high school, Century High School. I was there as the Hereford High School basketball team competed against Century High's boys varsity basketball team. So again, another wonderful evening. On February 24th, we had our MAB legislative meeting, and during that meeting, there was a discussion of current and upcoming proposed bills that were being discussed. On February 25th, I also attended our CCEA Lobby Night, and I certainly thank our membership for making that possible. I engaged in conversations with CCEA members related to workload issues. So I appreciate the professionalism of the teachers while engaging in these informative discussions. On February 26th, I attended the 10th Annual African American Read-In. All of the high school students who participated did a wonderful job while sharing their, while sharing songs, excerpts of literature, and also some original works. On March 1st, I attended the 2025 Carroll County History Day and Celebrating America History Expo. Here, we had students in grades 6 through 8 and 9 through 12 who shared their research projects related to this year's theme, which was rights and responsibilities in history. There were also displays prepared by our 5th grade students, and there were community organizations that shared their Celebrating America exhibits. The student projects were very well done and very informative, and the students were very well versed on sharing information about their projects. We thank the partners who helped to sponsor this event, our CCPS, the Historical Society of Carroll County, Celebrating America Carroll County, Maryland Humanities, Carroll County Public Library, and WTR. And thanks also to Mr. Melhoron and his staff and all who were involved in that meaningful community event. On March 3rd, I met with our conference co-chair and MAB staff so that we could have our conference planning committee session so that we could plan for our upcoming conference committee meeting. On March 5th, I had the opportunity to attend Superintendent McCabe's Town Hall at Century High School. Dr. McCabe, Mr. O'Neil, and Mr. Shockney did a wonderful job informing the South Carroll area about the implications of Blueprint Fiscal Compliance. The meeting was informative, and it was very well attended. I thank the community for asking thoughtful questions and for advocating for our students. On March 10th, I attended another MAB legislative meeting. There was discussion on MAB's priority legislation, and voting was also done on a few of the bills. And we do know that the crossover date is coming up soon. Crossover date for bills is coming up on March 17th. So finally, I thank our parents, staff, and community members for, again, advocating for our students and schools at the recent Town Hall Meeting at Century High School and also at a recent Commissioners Meeting where Superintendent McCabe and staff were sharing information about our budget for fiscal year 26.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. Chloe, if you want to have your update?
So I also attended the budget meeting on February 18th. On Thursday, February 20th, I was at the Carroll County Student Government Association's General Assembly for their Shrub Elect primary elections, and I also presented a workshop on goal setting with my co-presenter, Alex. I then attended a PTSO meeting at Liberty High School later that evening to hear about the specific impacts Blueprint would have on Liberty High School and the surrounding schools like Century, Freedom, and Oklahoma Road. Principal Gons did an amazing job breaking down the different aspects of Blueprint and answering parent and teacher questions, and I look forward to hearing more as we get more news. The election for the next Shrub Elect is coming to a close as I attended the general election filming on Thursday, February 27th with our two finalists, Olivia Poisson and Gabriella Tedeschi. Students will be able to watch this video and vote in the last week of March. And I would like to thank Mr. Flaherty once again for his instrumental help in helping us make all of this possible. I attended the Carroll County Student Government Association Executive Board Meeting on Monday, March 3rd, to finalize our plans for the April GA. So we finalized the workshop topics that we'll be giving as well as where we'll be holding it. And then lastly, to congratulate two teams, I would like to congratulate our Carroll County Mock Trial Teams from Westminster and Liberty High School for moving into district competitions. And I'd like to thank Mr. Melhoron for his help in making that possible as well as the Carroll County students who performed for senior and junior orchestra, band, and chorus for all state last weekend in Baltimore.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmer?
Okay, March is Youth Art Month. This special month encourages support for quality school art programs and provides a special opportunity for us to feature the wonderful artwork created by our very own talented students. Artwork by our high school students will be displayed through March 21st in the Langding Gallery at Carroll Community College. Elementary and middle school art is on display at the Carroll Art Center through March 30th.
On February 13th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce's County Budget Luncheon Update. On Monday, February 17th, I attended the District 5 Night in Annapolis. On February 18th, I attended a new board member training with Rochelle Eisenberg from our legal team. On February 18th, I attended the Fiscal Year 26 Budget Special Board Meeting. On February 19th, I attended the Community Advisory Council Meeting. On February 24th, I attended a Lunch About Nothing networking event. On February 25th, I had a new board member training on facilities management with Director of Facilities, Mr. Ray Prokop. On February 28th, I was a guest reader for Ms. Bowers kindergarten class at Elmer Wolf Elementary for their Read Across Maryland event. Thank you, Ms. Sweschinger and Mr. Clouter for inviting me out. On February 25th, I met with CCPS educators at CCEA's Local Lobby Night. On March 4th, I attended the Audit Committee Meeting. On March 4th, I also attended the Superintendent's Employee Town Hall. On March 5th, I attended the Superintendent's Community Blueprint Town Hall. On March 7th, I attended the Partnership for a Healthier Carols Committee Meeting. On March 8th, I attended the Celtic Canter in downtown Westminster where my children ran the one mile leprechaun chase. On March 9th, my family attended the Harlem Wizards game at Westminster High School where the Harlem Wizards played against CCPS teachers and administrators. That was a lot of fun. That was a great event if you have a chance, an opportunity to go in the future. Over the past few months, I've been visiting the schools where I serve as Board Ambassador. This month, I spent time with Ms. Fosnot at Shiloh Middle School, Ms. Winston at Westminster Elementary School, Mr. Clouter from Wilmer, Wilmer, Elmer Wolf, excuse me, Elementary School, and Ms. Wetzel, Mr. Wetzel from Gateway High School. Every month, I'll be highlighting the wonderful things that are happening inside our schools. This month, I would like to highlight Ms. Lisa Dolan, Advanced Academic Specialist at Westminster Elementary School for her project-based learning assignment, the Colonial Shark Tank. In the Shark Tank assignment, students do a deep dive into colonial era inventions, many of which that are still used today, including bifocals, the lightning rod, odometers, and even the submarine. To incorporate higher-level thinking skills and cross-curricular connections for our gifted and advanced, the students formed groups, explored an invention of their choice, created a 3D model, and then presented their invention to the sharks. The sharks composed of parents, principal, and instructor volunteers, and they had 10,000 shillings to invest. The sharks asked tough questions that require quick thinking and well-researched responses. This project integrates history, economics, public speaking, and teamwork, making it a fantastic way to extend grade-level learning. Thank you, Ms. Lisa Dolan at Westminster Elementary School.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmer. Mr. Whistler?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome, Commissioner Rothstein. Thank you for being here today. I'm going to talk to you briefly for a moment about National Athletic Trainers Month. March is National Athletic Trainers Month, and we're proud to have the Athletico Physical Therapy provide athletic trainers to all of our high schools. These certified athletic trainers are trained to meet the needs of all athletic departments with services including injury and illness prevention and wellness promotion, evaluation, assessment, and diagnosis, immediate and emergency care, therapeutic intervention, healthcare administration, and professional responsibility. Thanks to all these individuals for keeping our athletes healthy and safe. As for my itinerary over the last month, on February 13th, I attended a Family Life Advisory Committee Meeting with my colleague, Dr. Malvo, at Central Office. On February 18th, I attended our special board meeting at Central Office. On February 22nd, I attended the American Legion Regional Oratorical Contest in Frederick County. I'd like to celebrate Alexander Parnopee, a Winters Mill High School junior who represented Westminster's Post 31 at that competition. Each year, the American Legion sponsors a national constitutional speech contest for students under 20 and awards over $200,000 in scholarships. I really appreciate the American Legion's invitation to me to serve as a judge at their state-level competition in Towson on March 23rd. I really look, I look forward to attending that. On March, or February, excuse me, February 24th and March 10th, I attended the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Legislative Committee Meetings along with my colleague, Dr. Dorsey. We continue to work with our MAB lobbyists and guide their efforts to influence outcomes on dozens of bills before the legislature. On the 25th, I spent most of the day meeting with many legislators in Annapolis and testified on bills related to Blueprint. I want to express my immense gratitude to Dr. McCabe and John O'Neil for working tirelessly with key leaders in Annapolis to communicate our situation in Carroll. I also want to thank my colleague, Dr. Greg Malvo, for working alongside me, our District 5 and 42 delegations, and several other Board of Education colleagues across the state to help all of us seek special consideration. Collectively, we've drafted talking points, created presentations, testified on numerous bills to help ease the pain in every single Maryland county. My focus has always been and will be preserving local control, keeping class sizes low, and preserving the critical support our educators need. Math and reading specialists, media specialists and clerks, athletic directors, and technology devices for all of our students. Recently, we experienced a huge win last week when legislators restored vital funding to our foundation. I also want to thank the parents for getting involved and going down there and testifying and speaking with legislators. It means an incredible amount. We have Mako, Pazam, MAB, Board of Education colleagues from just about every local education authority making the full-court press to just explain to legislators how Blueprint is affecting us individually at the county level. And I think, I think it's paying off. So just keep going, keep working it. And I apologize to our friends at CCEA and CASE. I was not able to make your event that evening because I spent the entire day down there in Annapolis. On February 26th, I attended the 10th Annual CCPS African American Read-In at the Carroll Art Center in Westminster. Our high school students showcased their remarkable talents to a packed house. I appreciate the program's sponsors, the Carroll Arts Council, Carroll County Public Library, CCEA, Carroll Citizens for Racial Equity, Collision Course Restaurant, Carroll County NAACP, and St. Paul's United Church of Christ. Thank you for supporting our students. I will say that I'm sorry I missed your Town Hall, Dr. McCabe, but I was out of the country the week of March 3rd through 7th. But I do and will attend your meeting on April 2nd. On March 11th, I visited the Career County, the Career and Technology Center and watched our HVAC students in action. Mr. Shamer invited a CCPS alum and local business owner, John Corner, to share his story and advice. Mr. Corner guided students in transforming flat sheets of metal into ductwork for heating and air conditioning systems. Many thanks to Principal Tom Riddle and his staff for creating those extremely valuable partnerships with our local businesses that help inspire and educate our students. Mr. Corner has spent a lot of time with our Skills USA student that will participate in those events here later on this spring. So again, many thanks to Mr. Corner, and best of luck to that student at the competition later this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whistler. Commissioner Rothstein, is there anything that you wanted to update on?
Okay, so I figured if I'm at the table, why not? A few things, just real quick. I was fortunate to participate in the History Day, and I'll tell you, that was awesome because it brought back memories of Sam, my son, winning the local and going to, I think it was UMBC, for the state competition or something. But it was a lot of fun, and I think we've already heard two shout-outs to Mr. Melhoron. Well, you're going to get a third one from me because Emily, my daughter, who turned 29 today, I think would not be where she is without the caliber of teachers like Mr. Melhoron. And, you know, the personal touch that they have on our kids is just phenomenal. So thank you for all you do. And of course, a shout-out to one of my colleagues, Vivian Daly, for also helping put together such a great event last Saturday. Last week, I did attend the Town Hall at Century High School. Appreciate all the comments that were made, both to and from, and we're going to work this together. And Thursday, during open session, you presented Dr. McCabe and team the budget for CCPS. And now it's our turn, the Board of County Commissioners, to start working this budget. And we will start going into both closed and open sessions on dealing with the entire of the operational budget and capital budget from this point until by law, having it done by May 31st. The reason I'm sharing that with you collectively is if you have thoughts, ideas, candid as they may be, share them. Your voice is definitely heard, and it's our budget. It's not one or the other. So we're going to work this together. And I do appreciate folks reaching out, especially when they say where they're from. Because if they do it collectively to a whole group, if I see that it's from, you know, the area Eldersburg, Marysville, Sykesville, I'm more open to respond with a personal touch the best I can because as you can imagine, we're getting a lot of email traffic. So the best you can do is be very candid, say where you're from and why you're saying what you're saying, and give us time to respond. And I'm speaking for myself, but I imagine also my colleagues both up here and in the Board of County Commissioners. And that's about all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll give my quick update. February 13th, I attended the County Budget Update Luncheon hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. February 17th, I attended the District 5 and District 42C Night in Annapolis. February 18th, that was our Board of Ed budget meeting here. February 19th was the CAC meeting. February 20th, I attended the SGA General Assembly and had great conversations with students within question-answer session. That evening, I also attended the Parent Booster Meeting at Liberty High School. On February 24th, I attended the Westminster Lunch About Nothing. Just it's nonprofits and some local businesses that get together and just have a nice collaboration together. February 25th, I attended the CCEA and CASE Lobby Night. February 27th was the Career and Technology Center's career fair that was held there. Great attendance. Great attendance, phenomenal. I was like really impressed with how many students and parents had came out to look at different fire departments, military, different opportunities that are offered all around the state of Maryland. On March 4th, I attended the School Health Council Virtual Meeting. And that evening, I attended the superintendent's Town Hall that was held for staff. On March 5th, I attended the Superintendent's Town Hall at Century High School. March 11th, attended the Oklahoma Middle PTA Meeting. A couple upcoming events. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the LAC Meeting at Career and Technology Center. Read Across America Breakfast and Book Event will be at the Career and Technology Center, and a thank you to CCEA for hosting that event as well, and that, I believe, is at 8:00 AM. So everyone, students are welcome to attend for that one. Do not forget, we are closed on Monday, St. Patrick's Day. Everyone be safe. Teacher of the Year, that will be on March 19th. CAC Meeting will be on March 24th. We will have the Superintendent Town Hall on April 2nd at the Career and Technology Center. And tomorrow is Skills USA Pasta Dinner. I believe there are some flyers in the back on the table. So grab that. Again, that all those funds go towards Skills USA for the Career and Technology Center. And we also, 4-H sign-ups are currently underway, so contact your, the University of Maryland Extension Office for that. Very quickly, just wanted to make a quick statement. There is a lot of misinformation in our community, and it is very important to understand that Blueprint is a Maryland law. It is not a recommendation. The previous Board of Ed and this current Board of Ed have been working ever since the law passed to understand and submit plans over the past four years. All plans had to be approved by the state and the AIB. This is a requirement to meet the Blueprint law. I am urging everyone to please contact the General Assembly and the AIB and ask them for flexibility. This is something we have been doing for years. We've been asking that for years. We have a couple more weeks in Annapolis to hopefully make changes. In the back, you will find a flyer that has all the information of the General Assembly and the AIB contact information. So please grab that and contact those legislators.
And Superintendent Dr. McCabe?
To piggyback on that, I just want to thank Commissioner Rothstein again for being here tonight and for being at the community Town Hall last week. I also just want to thank the staff and community members who came out to the employee Town Hall and the community Town Hall. We had great turnout both nights, and I'm hoping to have similar turnout on April 2nd. First this evening, I'd like to congratulate our high school seniors who have been selected as finalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Jason Connell, Manchester Valley High School, Bennett Halowski, Westminster High School, and Akshaba Pant, Liberty High School. To qualify as a finalist and to be considered for a National Merit Scholarship, a student must have a record of consistently very high academic performance in all grades nine through 12 and in any college coursework taken. Congratulations again to these students for this outstanding achievement. I also would like to congratulate Melissa Doane, School Counselor at Westminster Elementary School, who has received the Elementary School Counselor of the Year Award from the Maryland School Counselor Association. Melissa prioritizes building relationships and fostering communication while approaching each student with sincerity, nonjudgment, and compassion. She is truly dedicated to helping students and families within Carroll County overcome their challenges and reach their full potential. Congratulations as well to Amy Sanders, Advanced Academic Specialist for Linton Springs and Eldersburg Elementary Schools, and Karen Stumpf, Advanced Academic Specialist for Carrolltown and Piney Ridge Elementary Schools. They have received honorable mentions in the Local School Influencers for Gifted and Talented Education Award category from the Maryland Gifted and Talented Advisory Council. Amy and Karen collaborate with families and the community about advanced learning opportunities and provide professional development and collaborative planning to classroom teachers to help support our gifted learners. They also have worked to enhance gifted and talented programming in Carroll County through curriculum writing. Alyssa Collins, a junior at South Carroll High School, was a finalist in the 2025 WJZ Black History Oratory Competition. Alyssa's essay was based on the quote by Jackie Robinson, "A life is not important except in the impact it has on other lives." Congratulations, Alyssa. I would also like to congratulate Michael Ekins, a junior at Century High School, who was recognized by the Maryland Business Roundtable for Education as a recipient of the 24 Maryland's Emerging Scholars Award. This award is an annual recognition of Maryland's most outstanding high school students who excel in academics, community service, and leadership, with special emphasis on STEM. Michael is a dynamic leader at Century, where he is in his third term as president of the class of 2026. He is an exceptional student with a strong academic record, having earned an academic letter and maintained a straight-A honor roll throughout his high school career. As a participant in the Northrop Grumman High School Partnership Program, Michael was accepted into their first-year program, where he will gain valuable STEM skills. He plans to attend college and pursue a doctoral degree in astrophysics. And finally, Carroll County Public Schools held our first-ever First Responder and Military Career Fair on February 27th at the Career and Technology Center. I would like to thank the 25 law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services organizations and the U.S. military that participated as exhibitors. We had a terrific turnout, and the students and community members in attendance received a wealth of information about the rewarding careers in these fields. And I also want to just give a separate shout-out to Ms. Brenda Bowers, who's sitting over to the side in pink. She planned and facilitated the event almost, you know, by herself, single-handedly.
Imagine one.
That's right. So thank you very much.
Go ahead, Mr. Whistler.
Yeah, again, I apologize for the interruption. I neglected to report that I did attend that First Responder Military Fair on February 27th. Andy, I'll mail you my amended comments, but a wonderful event. Brenda, hats off to you. You did a great job. And thanks to, you know, to Carrie Gaddis and Nick Shockney for working double overtime and being there as well. But it was a fantastic event. And as a military retiree, it made my heart swell to see so many of your young people spend so much time around that table. And, but yeah, just great job to everybody. Thank you so much.
Also, there's lots of good swag that some of the tables had, too. Like the stress hockey puck that Frederick County had. That was awesome. Okay, we're going to move on. We do not have any presentations this evening, so we do have reports. And first, we have school construction report. Dr. McCabe?
This is the standard monthly construction report. Mr. Marx is available for any questions or discussion. I think Dr. Malvo may have some.
Dr. Malvo?
With the school construction report, I was wondering if we could talk about if we know about projected enrollments. It has for Sykesville Middle School capacity addition and for Freedom Elementary School capacity in addition. We know that enrollments have not increased in the county, that projected enrollments may not need the construction as much and the additions. So just wondering in terms of what were the projected enrollments for these schools?
I don't know that, I don't get involved in projections. That's Mr. Kane. He's our planner. But I can tell you that he is evaluating that, and he'll, he's preparing his facilities master plan, and I believe that's when he'll be able to present more details for you. I think it's in April from what I was talking to him today.
That'd be great. Thank you.
No problem. Sorry, I don't have the numbers with me.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Marx. Next, we have Blueprint Update Report. Dr. McCabe?
As you know, we will continue to bring you updates on our progress with implementing Blueprint. So much of the focus now, rightfully so, is on the rollout of our plan to meet the state's timeline for fiscal compliance. The employee Town Hall and the first community Town Hall were well-attended. Staff and community members are interested in the process and in understanding the background and reasons for the fiscal compliance plan. We continue to work with our employee groups to iron out all of the necessary procedures to implement required staffing changes. We also continue to work very hard with the support of our Carroll delegation to bring awareness of the impact of fiscal compliance to state leaders. In particular, Delegate Stanko, who is on the Appropriations Committee, has been working with us tirelessly as we seek to develop awareness and seek reasonableness in managing and implementing this amount of change across our communities. In the meantime, our implementation planning moves forward. Tonight, we want to provide you with updates since the February meeting. Mr. Shockney?
Good evening, Board Members and Commissioner Rothstein. Yes, just here to provide a brief update this evening. I'll work through the first few, there we go, first few slides. The first few slides are a review of the slides that we utilized in February as well as at our Town Hall meetings as well. This slide just summarizes the gaps that exist at a total of 44 million. That number remains unchanged in each of the three areas under the Blueprint where those gaps come from. This slide, just as a reminder, Joint Policy Number Two between the AIB and MSBE identify that we need to be 50% compliant in fiscal year '26 and the remaining fiscal, 50% compliance in FY '27. And the process that CCPS has identified is in FY '26, we're going to phase in the changes at the secondary level. At an FY '27, we're going to phase in the changes at the elementary level. This next slide is also a slide that we've utilized before, identifying the specific requirements for fiscal compliance in the plan that we've identified. And I'll remind our community members that our complete implementation plan is on the website, along with the videos from the Town Halls and all the resources that we've been utilizing. So I encourage anyone to go there for a, for a much deeper, in-depth understanding and access to greater resources as we go. Tonight, I'm going to speak primarily to the, to the second or to the last two bullets that are on the list. At the February Board Meeting, I signaled to the Board and to our community that I would revisit the changes to the course offerings that will need to take place at the middle and high school level. When we're reducing staff at the middle and high school level in some schools, that will require a reduction in course offerings in some capacity at the middle and high school level, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. I'm also going to talk briefly about the changes to the service delivery models that we're going to utilize for our multilingual learners. That is another area of, of a gap that it currently exists, in which there'll be additional resources for our multilingual learners, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. But then I'm going to turn things over to Mr., excuse me, before I turn things over to Mr. O'Neal, I think I'm missing, I think I'm missing a slide. One thing I do want to point out before I go, before I turn things over to Mr. O'Neal, at the high school level in particular, we have what we call a Program of Studies. That's also on our CCPS website, which lists all the available courses in our school system for our students. Not every course within the Program of Studies is offered at every high school every year. I want to be clear with that because that's something that I want to make sure our families and our students and our stakeholders understand. And historically, we've offered different courses at, at each of the high schools, and that's based upon student interest in a particular course and the staff availability, and those are the changes and things that principals navigate on an annual basis. As I've said before, there may be changes to the frequency of our courses being offered. Some courses may not be, might need to be offered regionally, might be offered at one school and not other schools, as well as some courses may be offered virtually. But those strategies aren't going to result in us preserving every single course that it currently exists. So some courses will, will no longer be offered in the future. Yep, go ahead.
Nick could have done this one. Some, some updates on where we stand with the human resources processes needed to implement the staffing changes. And this really gets to why we've been on the timeline we've been on, why the superintendent formed a committee and, and asked the committee to produce a report in January, and why we've been bringing you incremental updates at monthly meetings because there's a lot of background work that has to, has to take place. And like I've had a couple people ask me, why would you release a plan if you don't have every detail yet? Well, one of the reasons is because once you have the framework of the plan, there's some processes that have to occur. And so negotiations have been underway with, with the bargaining units who are impacted by the plan, and that process is going well. And sometimes that requires formal negotiations with formal agreements, and sometimes it just requires sitting down collaboratively to talk through things and make sure that we have common understanding. So that's, that's moving forward very nicely. Mr. Diaz and our Human Resources Team have been holding training sessions for our school-based administrators on the transfer process so that, so that they're prepared for it and prepared to be a part of it. And Mr. Diaz is, is either planned or maybe fine-tuning some of the details of holding some pretty large-scale events later this spring to try to help facilitate working staff through these, through these transitions. And as we've said from the beginning, our goal remains to try to find continued CCPS employment for everyone or as many employees as possible as we go through this process of change over the next couple of years. So not necessarily things we can report out yet specifically, but a lot of good work and a lot of progress happening here with our employee groups.
All right. So to talk a little bit about the secondary course impact and its update, we've done some great work engaging with staff and with our principals, but I'm here to say I need a little additional time to be able to finalize the plan specifically at the, at the secondary level, and what exactly is that going to look like? We've, we've had some very creative ideas and thinking on how we can preserve or get creative to still offer as many of the courses that we currently offer. And what I don't want to do is to put out something that's incomplete or something that I, we, there's a little bit more work that I think in some time we can do to make it even better for our students. So I'm here to say, and I want to fully recognize that it was my full intention and plan to bring a, a more detailed list and explanation to our, to our community this evening, but we do need a little bit more time, and I think that time will pay dividends in our ability to be able to provide, again, the best set of courses for our students as we go. Just a couple of things that I've already kind of mentioned already. At the high school level, there will be some elimination of courses system-wide, and there may be some, and there will be some elimination of some school-specific courses. And that's where I want to, you know, place that point of emphasis that, again, we've historically offered different courses at our different high schools. At the middle school level, I will say I think the changes to the types of courses are going to be limited more to our related arts offerings. But again, we're fine-tuning that plan as well, and I hope in the very reasonable near future, I'll be able to come back to you with a more detailed explanation and set of strategies as we go. Here is the slide that I was looking for last time, and I just kind of jumped a little bit all over the place. I put a link to the Program of Studies here, so that'll take anyone that clicks on that directly to our complete list of course offerings. But as I've mentioned before, not every course in that Program of Studies is offered each year, and not every course in that Program of Studies is offered in every high school. And then again, like I said, there are different courses offered at, at each of our schools. And, and that is no different than how we've always operated in, in CCPS. As I said, mentioned earlier, that the frequency of courses may be changed or how they're delivered may be changed, but there will be courses that exist today that will unfortunately not exist in the future. But we're trying our best to minimize that number as much as we can. What I do want to talk a little bit greater detail- What I do want to talk a little bit greater detail is our plan for our multilingual learners. Because again, great work happening here as well in being able to identify those shifts and additional and new resources that are going to, to, to support that student group in particular. The first one is where we would really like to be able to increase the number of classroom teachers with dual certification. So a teacher that has maybe a, a content certification in one particular area, I'll use mathematics for an example, and have certification as a certified ESOL teacher as well. And we would love to be able to, to, to find creative ways to have staff in schools with greater concentrations of our multilingual learners have those dual-certified teachers working with those students as much as possible. Obviously, and having different, additional licensure and certification, I should be using the word licensure as well, will only make construction even more effective. So that's one strategy that we're going to, to, to begin to explore for as part of our service plan for our multilingual learners. And we're also going to be increasing the number of ESOL teachers that we have system-wide. Right now, we have a, a small number of ESOL teachers that we deploy across all of our schools that provide services to students and staff in those schools. We want to be able to increase the number of those and ideally, hopefully, have dedicated staff at each school as much as possible. We also want to change the service delivery models utilized by those ESOL teachers. Presently, our ESOL teachers, because there are so few, but we do provide services, do a lot of consultative help. They do work with staff, but they also work with students. We want to evolve that model to where our ESOL teachers are working directly with our students through a variety of different strategies, including co-teaching, intervention work, but also direct one-on-one work, either in the classroom, supporting the teacher or outside the classroom through an, an intervention model. We also want to purchase additional instructional and intervention materials that would be targeted specific for, specifically to our multilingual learners. And then the last one would be more targeted professional learning for our ESOL teachers in particular, but also for all of our staff as well, especially the staff that with those dual certifications, working in those schools with greater concentrations of multilingual learners. So a lot more that needs to help, needs to happen with this. But this is the beginning of the, of the plan that will begin starting to work out and, and as we go. So a couple of things on, on next steps. So just as I mentioned, we're going to finalize our changes to our secondary course offerings. We will communicate and meet with individual groups of staff impacted. We will continue to implement our human resources processes as we go. Mr. O'Neal mentioned negotiations that are taking place and will continue to take place. We will communicate the changes to students and families and revise those career plans as needed as we go. And I know that all of this is time-sensitive. And again, I'd, I'd rather take the time, make sure we're being clear in communicating with our, with our families and our students so they have all the information. We will continue to advocate with the AIB and MSBE as we've been doing. And then as always, we will, and this is a repetitive statement that I've used every time, we will continue to seek fiscal compliance efficiencies through making sure we're maximizing those expenditures and then those alignment of resources within our buildings. So those things will, will continue to happen. With that, I will pause and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shockney. Mr. Whistler?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Shockney. Appreciate the presentation. The next time, and again, if you need more time, that's fine. But I'm really interested in learning just how much the requirements for our multilanguage learners have grown over the last 10 years. Just a bullet or two or maybe a graphic that would show, 10 years ago, this is where we were as far as, you know, serving MLL learners and the cost. And then where it's, where it is today, if there is a growth. And then if you have any kind of expectations or extrapolations on what it might cost us years down the road, that would be very helpful. Again, I don't want too much of an onerous work, but just.
Yeah, that should not be difficult to do. And, and we certainly through Blueprint will be spending more funding than, than we ever have before since it's one of the, the restricted buckets that, that funding is put into from the state.
Right. And that's exactly why I'd like a little bit more information, just to gauge that future costs and expense. And I really appreciate the effort.
No problem. We're looking at about $4 million as it stands now after we've coded all of our current ESOL teachers to that multilingual learner pot of money through the Blueprint. So this plan is, is based upon about $4 million. But I understand exactly what you're asking for. We'll put that together as we go.
Dr. Dorsey?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Shockney. I was just wondering about the actual numbers of classroom teachers, the multilingual teachers that we actually have. Because it seems like we, we've been sort of short-staffed.
So we have about a, we, well, when it comes to teacher, total number of teachers with, with an ESOL certification, we're north of about 100 that have an ESOL certification as it presently stands, but may not be working as an ESOL teacher.
Okay. And about how many students are in that category?
571. Thank you, Mr. O'Neal.
So 100 teachers and 571?
We only have our ESOL teachers, we have 14 FTE, 16.5 actual teachers working under the ESOL provision with that many students.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And that's the intent, too, of increasing those numbers of ESOL teachers. With the current number that we have now, obviously, we're meeting our legal requirement as it stands. But we know that we could be doing more. So we'd love to be able to have more embedded staff working with our multilingual learners as a part of it.
Thanks.
Dr. Malvo?
I just thought I'd, since it came up with ELL and multilingual learners, clarifying some success with that. Actually, with our county, the ELL and multilingual students are actually doing rather well. And English language learners and multilingual learners, in fact, grade seven and eight are ranked number one in the state with ELA proficiency. And in addition, our English language learners and multilingual learners are also ranked in the top five in the state with every grade level except for fourth grade with math proficiency. So we should be proud of what's going on with them. And we hope that with Blueprint, they see that, that there's strong student achievement that is going on. And that if our ELL students or multilingual learners don't get enough resources, we certainly want to support that. But right now, where they're doing is, is great work. And, and that's also testimony to our teachers and, and CCPS in general.
Most definitely. Thank you. Yeah.
Ms. Zimmer, did you have a question? Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments, Board Members? Thank you. Next on the agenda is legislative updates. Dr. McCabe?
The General Assembly is less than a month from concluding. And Monday is Crossover Day in the chambers, which is the next critical date in the legislative process. We have provided you with an updated bill-tracking list. And Mr. O'Neal will quickly touch on some highlights for us.
Yes. So there, there's a couple of bills, I think we have talked about before on the cover sheet that we just wanted to mention really quickly. First is what's known as, typically, we call it the Governor's Bill. But what's known as the Excellence in Maryland Public Schools Act. And this is the bill that mechanically would put the budget in place that the Governor proposed. And there's been some activity as we near Crossover Day. In the House, the House has passed out their version of the Excellence in Maryland Public Schools Act. And in the version that the House passed, passed completely as a body, the House did restore the $163 per pupil funding into the foundation. And that was, this is something we've been talking about throughout our budget process and the impact of that. Furthermore, the House version also untethered or dis- decoupled that particular amount of funding from being associated with teacher collaborative time in fiscal year '26, so next year. And so that bill, it was, in that version, will cross over to the Senate now for them to consider. And we'll know by, by the end of the session if, if the funding is permanently restored or not. But that would have a, a couple of million-dollar impact in a good way on overall unrestricted state revenue to our operating budget schedule. And this might be one of those times to remind everyone that there's sort of these two things happening right now. One is the operating budget plan, the balancing of the budget. And that's where that money would have meaning, particularly since the Houses has untethered it from collaborative time. It would not necessarily have an immediate important impact on the fiscal compliance conversation, the Blueprint fiscal compliance conversation. And then another bill that, that had hearings and hasn't moved yet, but we thought it would be worth highlighting because we, we, we haven't paused to do something like this, is Senate Bill 852, which is a bill that sought some alterations to the Blueprint. Did get a cross-file, so it's, it's a bill that's been in both bodies of the General Assembly. And can't, I can't really comment on the likelihood of, of the bill passing. Perhaps it could pass in some limited ways through amendments at this, amendments to other actions at this juncture of the General Assembly. But I did want to highlight it because I think it's a recognition of, of a growing understanding at the state level that there, there sometimes can be a little bit of disconnect perhaps between the theory of the Blueprint and then what that might look like when, when you go about implementing it in a very real way in a school system. And so you can see the bulleted list there on the cover sheet. This was some of the, some of the components of the bill. But it's the first time in my, in my mind that the General Assembly's had a meaningful conversation through a hearing on these kinds of, you know, concerns or challenges or sort of things we need to think about now that we're in the real work of implementing Blueprint and not just talking about what Blueprint might look like in action. So I'll pause there. For any questions, Mr. Whistler, Dr. Dorsey, both very active members of the MAE legislative committee. Dr. McCabe, very active as part of the legislative process of the Superintendent's Association. So you might just have comments of your own as well.
Dr. Dorsey, did you have any? Mr. Malvo?
So a lot of very interesting legislative bills that are out there. I just thought I'd point to two bills that are of interest because there is that concern about classroom sizes potentially in the future expanding, ballooning. And we need to make sure that our teachers have some ability to be empowered and perhaps, you know, as other things are being exasperated with all the other things we need to be concerned about. If we're losing any athletic directors, if we're losing reading and math specialists, if we're losing, you know, special ed helpers, if we're losing, you know, all these things that classroom size is going to make a difference, too, and to help them as well. There are two bills in particular that I think the language is strong. There's HB 773, Public and Middle School, or Public Middle and High School Student Discipline Right to Teach Act of 2025. This one authorizing a teacher in a public and middle or high school in the state to have certain disciplinary action in response to certain student behavior and direct students to certain school officials. And prohibiting a county board of education from taking disciplinary action against a certain teacher for certain actions and so forth. I don't want to go through too far, but that's one I think we need to look out to for assisting perhaps with our teachers and our classrooms in that atmosphere. HB 1194 is another. This one is Public Schools Injury Incidents Requirements for Tracking and Reporting. This goes into that certain public schools to develop and implement a system to track and report injuries, incidents, whether intentional or accident, to a student, a teacher, or a school employee on the school campus during the school year, establishing certain reporting for county boards of ed and so forth. So I bring these up, and I'll just say that MAE has said that they oppose these already. But that's okay because I would like for us to consider still that there are elements in the language and some good ideas in these bills for us to consider, perhaps in adapting to Carroll County policy. I'd like for the staff to consider that. I know that you're very busy in terms of fiscal things and so forth. But maybe down the road in a couple of months that we look at this in terms of, again, more relief for teachers, for the right sort of academic atmosphere in place and, and that sort of thing. Could we look at that, though, as a staff in the, the future and after, a few things settled, but maybe in a couple of months?
What was your first one?
First one I mentioned, Dr. Dorsey, was HB 0773 or SB 482, Public Middle and High School Student Discipline Right to Teach Act 2025.
One of the, some of the ones that you all voted on earlier.
Right, yeah. And again, great, great comments, Dr. Malvo. Yeah, there are some bills that I don't think will make it through, primarily because they're not cross-fired. And if they're not cross-fired, they're going nowhere. But, but House Bill 1132, House Bill 773, House Bill 1194, they have really excellent elements that we as a body may want to think about and chew on to incorporate in local policy. But some things that really empower our educators to take charge of their classrooms, maintain safety, you know, ensure reasonable discipline. But, but yeah, you're absolutely right, Dr. Malvo. Some really good points in those bills.
Ms. Zimmer?
I just want to echo my colleague's sentiments, and I'm grateful that Dr. Malvo brought that up. I could not agree with what he is saying more. And I understand that the likelihood of them passing in Annapolis, especially HB 773, is not high. Those are the types of things that I, too, would like to see in Carroll County, allowing teachers to take back their classrooms. So thank you for bringing that up, Dr. Malvo.
And then if I may, again, just echo my colleagues. You know, I'm also tracking House Bill 161. It did make it through the House, and the Senate is starting to do that. That's related to the health framework and just ensuring that we can preserve our local control and offering our parents an option. And then also, I'm monitoring House Bill 57, which relates to cell phone policies. I'm not sure that bill will go anywhere because it doesn't have a cross-filing. But again, just, you know, up my charge with my colleagues on, as the MAE legislative voting members, preserving local control, making sure we don't support any measures that put more onerous processes or procedures on our staff or our educators. But, but yeah, I really appreciate the update, John. Thank you so much.
And I do remember some of the comments concerning that House Bill 1194 is that, again, we have internal tracking at all the school systems. So it would just be another layer of having to report to the state.
Right. And I think that's the primary reason our colleagues at MAE don't support it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. All right. And we are now going to move on to public participation. Mr. Whistler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers with a connection to CCPS will be allowed to address the board for the allotted three minutes. Only those speakers that have registered online and have been notified by the Communications Department will be permitted to speak. Priority will be given to those citizens that are addressing the board about an item on the current agenda. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the board through email or US mail. Public participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer session. However, if citizens do have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and board do reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the public participation period. Statements to the board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. The board has scheduled time on the agenda for public participation at approximately 5:15 PM. The board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. Additionally, the board retains the discretion to allow additional speakers as it deems appropriate. The board is allowing no more than an hour for public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for board members on the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the board meeting. In lieu of signs, In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or to the board members. Our first speaker this evening, and again, please correct me if I mispronounce your name, Lehman Tuttle. Thank you.
Yeah, got it in one. Nice job. We'll see how fast I go. Okay, good afternoon and thank you. My name is Lehman Tuttle. I'm the father of two students at Sandy Mountain Elementary School. Going to try to be quick. I'm here today to discuss the budget crisis that continues to threaten our schools in Carroll County. Most of us are very well acquainted with the specifics of this fiasco, but in broad strokes, our county has failed to address blueprint, a piece of legislation that rightly or wrongly has been on the book for years. Instead of allocating sufficient funds to keep our schools solvent, county commissioners have consistently underfunded this vital public service. Now, at the eleventh hour, our community's been thrust into a financial clown show with very little time to grasp the details of the crisis, let alone to address them. This board, to its credit, made a good faith effort to appeal to our county commissioners to fill a gap, a gap that commissioners themselves are fundamentally responsible for. Led by President Keeler, a man, by the way, who insists that this body is responsible for the problem, Mr. Keeler and the commissioners have pretty much rejected that request or at the very least voiced open hostility to it. Their reasons, I understand them, are twofold. One, commissioners would need to use monies from an unassigned fund that the commissioners define as one-time use and for emergencies. Two, commissioners fear that allocating those funds would lock them into paying that sum every year due to a maintenance of effort provision in the blueprint. This reasoning does not hold water. First, the commissioners cite the unassigned funds as a one-time use emergency fund and note that we citizens do not know what that means. Let's be clear, there's not a misunderstanding on the nature of the funds. There is instead a fundamental disagreement on what constitutes an emergency. This budget crisis is immediate and existential, nearly one hundred jobs, vastly increases school class sizes, and the closure of the outdoor school. If this does not rise to the definition of an emergency, I do not know what does. We are not requesting that this fund be used for ongoing expenses. We are using it as a one-time stopgap that allows breathing room for further negotiations to take place without major disruptions to our schools. Second, related to the maintenance of effort provisions, Dr. McCabe can correct me here, but I don't believe that all avenues have been exhausted at the state level, particularly with the AIB. I feel certain that that body's interest in the quality of education, at the very least, make them receptive to some additional reprieve. And on the topic of maintenance of effort provision, I'd add that the basic logic of it seems odd, telling a starving kid that you won't give them a sandwich because you may be obligated to give them more sandwiches is comically immoral. I don't want to be here talking to you. My wife and I moved to this area in large part due to the strength of our school system, but over the last few months, I've come to understand how precarious that strength is and has been for years. The fact that insufficient funding has been keeping this thing together with glue and popsicle sticks and made it incapable of the flexibility required to pivot at times like this is a problem. We have a dedicated and brilliant group of teachers and administrators who keep this ship afloat despite chronic underfunding. To kick that staff while it's down by removing vital resources is unfair to them, it's unfair to the county at large, and it's desperately unfair to our children. So what can we do? I urge this board in the strongest possible terms to put your shoulder to the wheel and keep pushing. Do not relent in your attempts to maintain sufficient funding. Citizens like us are kicking down doors of state officials and commissioners to try to fix this thing. I urge you to do the same. As I've said before, I'll say it again, budgets are about priorities, our kids are a priority, so let's treat them like one. Bam, zero seconds.
You did it. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it. Our next speaker this evening is Andrew Wildman.
Okay, I thank the board for the time to speak on, second time, on our lovely cell phone policies. Okay, I'm here to present a publicly acceptable approach to ending the problem once and for all, and do it soon. In a perfect world, such a policy reform would not fall to you and the other fifteen thousand school boards in the country, okay? Please note that the first cell phone policy or cellphone lawsuit took place in two thousand and four, two thousand and five. And since then, federal and state lawmakers have done nothing to really move it. And as the gentleman said a minute ago, the cell phone policy isn't going anywhere in Congress, okay? You may ask why? Primary reason is the campaign donations that go to the House and the Senate, okay? And from what I call the cell phone and internet click industries, all right, the CCs. And all the CC businesses want is to see students clicking all day, every day. Okay, so we have a solution to this, and we will have the school boards back if you were bold enough to do this, okay? I respectfully challenge the school board to take this prudent, yet politically bold action, to prohibit all cell and other communication devices, to even enter the school buildings in Carroll County effective Monday, March thirty-first. Yes, in three weeks. Okay, miracles do happen, okay? The only exception I could see to that would be allowing seniors to keep certain privileges through the rest of the year, and that might help seal the deal, okay? This reform is served by simply keeping the problem from even entering the school building, okay? No forms and procedures, and the whiners that always come out and complain about this will be ignored at this time, okay? The damage that is being done is both county, city, state, national, and global, okay? And in the end, it all falls to the local school boards then, doesn't it? For you folks, right? To take this challenge up and take care of it. Our school board and this county could lead the state and the nation, okay? You would become known as bold educational reformers and heroes of public education, okay? We desire the numerous educational benefits and social benefits for the students that this could provide immediately to take place. You are the only ones that can implement this most beneficial educational reform. So let's do it for the kids, the teachers, and the principals, okay? Again, the daily benefits of this policy could begin in just three weeks, and when the twenty-five, twenty-six school year begins, it will no longer even be an issue. And all I can say is amen to that. Thank you for your time, and I would like to follow up with somebody when appropriate.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Shannon Hinckes.
I would like to address a few things, beginning with the operating budget. At the February eighteenth meeting to discuss the operating budget, no in-depth discussion was had about budget shortfalls, especially surrounding laptops. I would like to ask for a serious discussion surrounding the one-to-one policy in grades three to eight, a hard look at the overall cost savings that we know is at least one million dollars for grades three to five, and an exploration of the pros and cons of issuing a laptop to all students above third grade. I have not spoken to one parent who is in favor of one-to-one devices, at least at the elementary school level, and this needs to be addressed, not just for our budget concerns. Our children get enough screen time, and they need to focus on fundamentals. Second, I'd like to address blueprint. I want everyone listening to know that we must contact state senators to urge them to provide relief from blueprint spending mandates. Our Carroll County delegation has been doing what they can to help, so please focus on others who may not be so sympathetic to Carroll County. We should absolutely have local control over how we solve our problems with student performance. I urge you to make phone calls to Senator Brian Feldman, four one oh eight four one three one six nine, Senator Bill Ferguson, four one oh eight four one three six zero zero, Senator Guy Gazoni, four one oh eight four one three five seven two. Commissioner Ken, Commissioner Keeler is right to say we must be fiscally responsible. If we do not want to follow the state's example of a three billion dollar deficit, we must get relief from blueprint mandates concerning compensatory education. I am one hundred percent against cutting any teacher or athletic director positions due to the blueprint experiment, which in my opinion will do very little to improve performance and will cost a ton of money, possibly to the tune of a twenty percent tax increase. That is helpful to no one. And yes, athletic directors made the world go round in high school sports. They cannot be cut. There are things CCPS can do to improve performance, like hold all students to high standards, insist on timeliness with assignments, enforce discipline, and of course, no cell phones in the classroom. We have grown lax in those areas. There are things parents can do to improve performance, like holding their children to high standards, enforcing discipline, and presenting a united front with teachers on those issues, homework, and timeliness. Finally, I have a question that I hope you can address, and I know it's not a Q and A, so I'll just pose it and whenever I can get an answer. I'm a little bit confused on the funding that you have requested from the commissioners from blueprint. I'm under the impression that we must have fifty percent compliance this year and fifty percent next year. So I want to know if the additional forty-four million dollars gets us to fifty percent compliance, where next year we will need that forty-four million dollars plus another large sum for the second half of compliance? Maybe this is spelled out, but it's, everything I've read, I've just not seen the answer. So I just want to know what's coming down the pike. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Christopher Coza.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education, it's good to be before you again. My name is Christopher Coza, and I'm blessed to be the father of two wonderful boys, the oldest of which will be entering school this fall. I'd like to take a moment to speak with you this evening about the application for the Carroll Classical Charter School. I want the best education for my sons, but like all, I must face limitations of time and treasure. More constrained than either of these is the reach of my voice and influence in my children's education. As the state assumes more control over the workings of our education system, my voice is drowned out by the powers that be. Bureaucrats and lawmakers in Annapolis are making the education decision for my sons and almost nine hundred thousand other students. To them, my boys are nothing more than a statistic in their top-down authoritarian blueprint. We as an American people have lost our sense of civic responsibilities after deferring our duties to monolithic bureaucracies, but our communities in Carroll County are hungry to take it back. This application for the Carroll Classical Charter School is our attempt to restore what is lost. Charter schools rely upon the tripartite union of teachers, administrators, and parents to come together in an equal partnership for our children's education. This community of equals is far more equipped to meet our children's needs, as unlike those bureaucrats, we know our children's names, their challenges, their hopes, their dreams, and aspirations. In Carroll Classical Charter School, we can form a culture based in shared values like respect, humility, love, and patience. Our charter school can also offer what I believe is missing from our current education system, accountability, that our parents also practice those values. I understand that you must rightfully and justly scrutinize the application, as all power must be held to account. Please be rest assured that we are not reinventing the wheel, but rather continuing in the tradition of a tried and true education model, a model used elsewhere in the state of Maryland, like Frederick Classical Charter School. This classical education model is based on the trivium of grammar, logic, and rhetoric. Permeating this model is the study of virtue as we aim to develop not only the mind, but also the character. In words of Theodore Roosevelt, "To educate a man in mind but not in morals is to educate a menace to society." I'd like to ask my good neighbors in Carroll County to open your minds to what a community of equals in pursuit of virtue can build together. I'd ask that you research what classical education is, and we, the founding families, are here to help. As I close, I leave you with the mantra of Frederick Classical Charter School. I will learn the true, I will do the good, I will see the beautiful. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I thank you for your time. May God bless our children, may God bless Carroll County.
Thank you, Mr. Coza. Our fifth of nine speakers is Mrs. Diana Bergman.
Greetings, board members, Dr. McCabe and Commissioner. My name is Diana Bergman. I would like to express concerns regarding the impact to Carroll County public schools with losing federal funds. The five Title I schools identified on CCPS's website will lose much-needed resources funded by federal dollars. Special education students will also be impacted. Recently, a bill sponsored by Senator Benjamin Brooks passed to protect special education students by creating a delivery model. However, it does not address how CP, CCPS HR vets those providing related services beyond just a background check. I recently discovered an individual is practicing psychology services without being registered on the National School Psychologist Board or licensed in the state of Maryland. I didn't receive written notification, and this is concerning. If those professionals, such as a speech-language pathologist, an occupational therapist, a school psychologist, a board-certified behavior analyst, a social worker, are providers who have to be licensed and registered in the state of Maryland in order to deliver these related services for our special education students, one would hope that we're checking to make sure that their licensing, registration, and credentials are current and up to date. Now, upon my discovery, I did find out this individual was hired in 2020, and as we know, we faced unprecedented challenges with COVID. So I know that there were some waivers that were granted in discussion in order to deliver services to a community of special education students that were severely impacted with those challenges. So what I'm worried about is if another parent in Carroll County public schools would have made this discovery, I would hope that the school district will be responsible and notify those parents that were impacted, just so we're aware and know, and that HR is actually adequately funded and employed so they could do the due diligence of checking and verifying that these credentials are updated, because they have unintended consequences that will delay progress on these childrens that are very vulnerable in our school district. So respectfully, like any taxpayer, I know we have a tight budget, but I don't want my money, my taxpayer dollars, and my contribution to paying federal taxes and state funding to go to someone that doesn't register, is not certified or licensed, and keeping their credentials up to date. And I'm sure everyone here could agree. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bergman. Our next speaker is Amy Hardesty.
Good evening, Dr. McCabe, board members, and Mr. Whistler, Mr. Rothstein, sorry. I'm Amy Hardesty, a CCPS parent, taxpayer, and proud Westminster High and Carroll Tech graduate. Dr. McCabe, your perseverance through this challenging process, especially with recovering from pneumonia, demonstrates your extraordinary commitment in leadership. Thank you. I want to express my appreciation to everyone who makes our school system function and to each board member for your dedication to maintaining CCPS's quality and quality education. Our children and staff's safety must remain top priority. Through volunteering, I've witnessed incredible dedication throughout CCPS. Bus drivers navigate county roads with dozens of energetic, often loud, children behind them, maintaining focus despite constant commotion. Our food service staff, who nourish our children daily, preparing hundreds of meals with care despite limited resources and tight timeframes. Our custodians, who tackle difficult tasks like cleaning fecal drawlings off bathroom walls and tirelessly collecting mounds of trash from cafeteria floors while maintaining the building to be a clean and safe environment for everyone. Our instructional assistants are forced to use antiquated duplicators and collators, equipment that wastes hours of their time that should be spent supporting our children's education. These same assistants stand outside in all-weather conditions managing car rider lines to keep our children safe. Our math and reading specialists and primary interventionists, who are critical to our students' foundational learning. These educators identify struggling students early, provide targeted intervention when children fall behind, and give our most vulnerable learners the individualized attention they desperately need. Without these specialists, achievement gaps will widen, students will fall further behind, and the entire educational trajectory of a child can be altered. Our media specialists, who many may not realize are essential educators, not just librarians. They teach our children how to find trustworthy information in today's digital world, how to properly cite sources, and how to incorporate research into their writing, skills required for college and career readiness. These same specialists spend countless hours piecing together broken projectors and swapping parts just so basic classroom instruction can continue throughout the school. Our teachers, who somehow juggle the diverse learning needs of every child in their classroom while drowning in administrative paperwork, pursuing professional development, and attempting to maintain some semblance of personal life. Each role represents not just a position, but a commitment to our children and community. Each contract represents not just an agreement, but a promise to those who dedicate their professional lives to our students. I implore this board to honor every contract and fight for every position. When we fail to adequately resource our schools, we fail our staff, children, and community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our seventh of nine speakers is Sharon Willhide.
Good evening, Commissioner and the board. Thank you for letting me speak this afternoon, evening. I'm not sure we're in that gray area. My name's Sharon Willhide. I'm a parent of two children at Mechanicsville Elementary. There's a lot of discussion in the community right now surrounding our schools. A lot of it has to do with blueprint and the necessary fund that it requires. The Board of Ed... fund that it requires. The Board of Ed, my first concern, the Board of Ed, you are elected to your positions. The community elected you to represent our needs for our children when it comes to their education. According to the county commissioners, two of you told them that the school system does not need any additional funding for fiscal year '26. If this, in fact, were true, then why are we going to lose 92 teachers? Why are we going to not have reading specialists and math specialists in our elementary schools? Why are we not going to have media specialists at the middle school and high school? Why are we losing athletic directors? If we don't need any additional funding, then we shouldn't be losing 92 positions. Yet, two of you are saying that 92 people in this county are not important to our children's education. Thank you to those of you who attended the town hall last week at Century. Your dedication to our children does not go unnoticed. Thank you also to the three of you who requested additional funding from the county commissioners. My second concern regarding funding is if we do not have the proper funding to implement Blueprint and keep those 92 teaching positions, then why is the possibility of a charter school even on the table? Charter schools are funded by the local government and local funding. It is a way to use local funding to develop a school that can dictate its curriculum and the students who are permitted to attend. If there are members on the Board that don't feel Carroll County Public Schools requires additional funding, then why are we seeking legal advice in your closed session on a charter school, which would take the local funding that CCPS needs right now? The Carroll Learning Alliance has established a charter school that they want to build in the Eldersburg area, starting in the fall of 2026. It's a little ironic that the schools that are not going to be receiving support and proper funding and have class sizes in the mid-40s are in the area where they want to build this charter school. I don't know if you've gotten a chance to research the charter school they're proposing, but they are proposing a charter school using a classical education methodology. The classical education methodology is not research-based, not evidence-based, and lacks significant and modern improving teaching techniques as well as the content. Without a strong STEM curriculum, a classical education will deprive children to develop their critical thinking skills. This is not what the community wants. You can see at the Board of, at the town hall last week, that the community wants to support our public schools. How on earth are we going to take money that could be helping our amazing schools and give it to a charter school that gets to dictate who attends? Charter schools could deny students on IEPs to attend their school. Taking local funding to support a school like this goes against everything that Blueprint stands for.
Please finish your thoughts.
Yep, one last thought. We need to focus on requesting the additional funding from the commissioners so that we can fully fund Carroll County Public Schools and keep it a public school system where every child is allowed to attend.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Teri Mahoney. Teri Mahoney? Okay, our final speaker of the evening is Sherri Lively. Thank you, Ms. Lively.
Hi there. My name is Sherri Lively. I have two children in Carroll County Public Schools, one in middle school at Sykesville Middle and one at high school at Century High. Thank you for letting me come to speak today. I just read the notes last night and was very surprised to see that Sykesville Middle is on projection to add another 100 students within the next couple of years, as well as there's an opportunity to bring on additional places for the students. I've been in Sykesville Middle. It's one of the oldest schools we have in the area, and the classroom sizes for Sykesville Middle are extremely small. And with the Blueprint and the way that it looks like we're going right now, I think it's going to be a fire code to increase the student population in each classroom as it is. So adding on an additional 100 students and removing at least seven teachers, I think, is what we're on the plan for that, for that school. It's going to be a big problem. I know that what you guys have been saying for the past couple of weeks, that we have plans, it doesn't look like we have really an agenda to do anything right now other than cut the student, or I mean, sorry, cut the teachers and move and shift things around. So I wanted to give some opportunity to talk about some of the things that I think moving forward we can do. I think definitely receiving the money from the commissioners for what we're calling a Band-Aid effect would be helpful, but moving forward, increasing the taxes. I know that's something that hasn't been done publicly, talking to Mr. Rothstein in several years. I know that some of the taxes go to not only the schools, but there are other things in the county that some of the county is not in agreement with, like our roads. The people that don't have children in the school system seem to be against increasing taxes because they don't have children, but there are roads in this county that I've never driven on that do belong to other people. So I feel like there are things, there's sewage and things like garbage collection. I pay for my own garbage collection. I don't have sewage payment because I do have a well and I pay for my own septic. So there are things that, again, others do have that I don't, that I still pay taxes for. There's also police, EMT, fire. I do believe that those, there are funds that need to go to that, and I'm not sure exactly where some of that funding is going to, but I do find that that's a good thing. I also find that there are people in our community, and I know I don't have a lot of time, but I did do a service day in Baltimore County at one point for the school system where we got a huge group of volunteers to do a red day, and we went into 15 different schools and helped with working on painting the schools and cleaning the schools and completely taking over some of their electronic equipment from some of the people that knew how to do that, fixing up some of the things that needed to be done. And that saved a lot of money for the school system to make sure that some of their things were done that we could save money on in some of our school systems here as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That concludes the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Whistler. Okay, we are going to move on to item... Employee groups, there we go, sorry.
Second time.
Sorry. I'm going to jump ahead, sorry.
Marsha used to let everyone leave when we were about to speak, so I get it. By the way, congratulations on hitting a zero. Well done.
Okay. Good evening, Board Superintendent and the Commissioner tonight. I am Celeste Jordan, President of CCEA. Since CCEA and CCPS are currently in negotiations, I will not be speaking about the current financial situation we are facing. I'll share something else instead. In May of 2022, I went home, oh, that should be 2012, god, how time flies. All right. In May of 2012, I went home a Mother's Day weekend with several siblings and found our parents in medical distress. They had not told us the reality of their situation. During that weekend, my mom went to the ER, my dad went into hospice care. My siblings and I met to work out a calendar to take care of my parents. My sister Jean and I were both CCPS teachers. I told my siblings I could not miss work the next two weeks because I had two Algebra I classes who would be taking the HSA, a high school graduation requirement. Jean taught best at Robert Moten and explained how it was not good for her students to have change and miss that much time. We all agreed that once the school year was over, we would take over care of our parents. I went back to work on Monday. My first class was honors trig pre-calculus. The students entered the classroom like any other day, and I realized I couldn't do it. I couldn't teach. I was not emotionally prepared to stand in front of those students and teach trig. So I walked over to the file cabinet, got out my copy of October Sky, and put it into the VCR. I told the kids we were doing something different today. Most kids took this as an opportunity to catch up on their work. One student asked to go to their locker to get work from another class. After that, another colleague called me, Mary Kay Maurer, many of whom you know, called my room to ask what was wrong, and I said, "What do you mean?" And Mary Kay told me that the student came to her room and said, "Something is wrong with Ms. Jordan. She's throwing a movie, and it's Monday." I told Mary Kay that I just had to get through today and I would be okay, a lie. The next day, I had to tell my students about my parents because I had a strict no-cellphone policy that I followed as well. I had to let my students know what was going on in my life because my cellphone was going to have to be turned on and I would be answering it. You may wonder why I'm sharing this personal story with you. Being educators, unlike many jobs, because we work with people every day. But not just people, we work with students. Students count on us to be there every day. They count on us to be a steady presence in their lives. My students told me later they were extremely worried when I played that movie. They know I don't show movies, and if I was going to do it, it would definitely not be a Monday. Educators have to put on a brave face, no matter what is going on in their lives, and stand in front of a classroom full of students. On Thursday, February 13th, many educators were called to this very room to be told their jobs would be eliminated or changed to a different job. On Friday, February 14th, they buried their feelings, showed up to school, and did that job like any other day. And now they're living in some sort of limbo as CCA and CP- CCPS negotiate, as CCA, MSEA, CCPS, and state-elected officials work to come up with a possible remedy. Educators are expected to be a constant source of stability, energy, and encouragement, even when our worlds are falling apart. Unlike some professions where there may be flexibility or time to step back when life becomes overwhelming, educators don't have that luxury. Substitutes are scarce, workloads are overwhelming. The expectation is that we just keep swimming, and we will, and we will, but I'm not sure at what cost. I urge everyone in Carroll County to consider the reality of what educators endure and take action to support those who dedicate their lives to educating children, because an educator who is well-supported is an educator who can truly make a difference. On a lighter note, Read Across Maryland will be held Saturday, March 15th. This event is sponsored by CCA, CASE, and CCPS. Each child attending will receive a free book, free pancake breakfast. Adults can have pancakes too, but you, we do ask for donation, and we use that to buy books for next year. South Carroll High School will be performing the unsinkable Molly Brown, and Liberty High School will be performing from Cinderella. There will be police and SWAT teams, so please don't panic when you see them. They're just there for, you know, touch the truck stuff. Okay. I want to publicly thank Ms. Bataglia, Dr. Dorsey, Ms. Zimmer, Dr. Malvoe for coming to the CCA and CASE Lobby Night. Some of you met with CCA, some met with CASE. I hope you enjoyed the conversations as much as our members did. I also want to thank the state delegation for meeting with CCA members in February. A special shout-out to Delegate Stanko and, can't believe I'm saying this, Senator Reedy, for working with MSEA and CCA to help Carroll County in our current situation. I have repeatedly said, "By having conversations and listening to one another, we can come up with solutions together." Babe Ruth said, "The way a team plays as a whole determines its success. You may have the greatest bunch of individual stars in the world, but if they don't play together, the club won't be worth a dime." I also do want to take a moment to thank the members of the community who came out to welcome us at the employee town hall out front. It was very much appreciated. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. McCabe, members of the Board of Education, and Commissioner Rothstein. I'm Cindy Porter, Special Education Paraprofessional at Robert Moten Elementary and President of CASE, representing clericals, assistants, and paraprofessionals working in Carroll County Public Schools. As Celeste mentioned, CASE will be participating in Read Across Maryland this Saturday at the Career and Tech Center along with CCEA and CCPS. We're excited to be a part of this event, which showcases the importance of reading and the love it can bring to readers of all ages. I sincerely hope parents and students will take an opportunity to not only attend the event, but also say hello to any of the educators they may recognize who will be there. I think it's important for students to understand that even though we may be their educators, some of us have had challenges with reading when we were students ourselves, but through practice and perseverance, we've not only made it past those challenges, but many of us have developed a love of reading to the point where we either have stacks of books we want to read at home or lists of books that we want to read on some device. So for our students, no matter where you are in your reading journey, keep at it, and come to see us on Saturday, where you can get a free book to add to your own list of books to read. Members of CASE, we're also grateful to be a part of the CCEA CASE Board of Education Lobby Night on February 25th. CASE had representation from classifications across our bargaining unit, who shared the responsibilities of our positions and how those responsibilities impact us personally and professionally. Thank you to the Board members for your participation in that evening, and in particular, Mrs. Bataglia and Mrs. Zimmer, who we had the pleasure to meet with that evening. We very much appreciated the ability to share more about what we do in our educational support capacities and the conversations that ensued. And finally, I want to thank Dr. McCabe, Mr. O'Neill, Mr. Shockney, and the members of central office staff for the two town hall meetings held last week. The factual presentations to CCPS staff and the public who attended at Century High School helped everyone gain a better understanding of the unique issues facing our county as we try to navigate the constraints and accountability markers of Blueprint. It was also great to see Delegate Josh Stanko at the meeting at Century. He spoke of the collaborative efforts being put forth by many to address the situation we are facing in Annapolis. And most notably, although not a representative of the southern part of the county, he said that it was important for him to be there because Carroll County is Carroll County, and that we need to all work together in order to achieve the best possible outcome in this challenging situation. I couldn't agree more with Delegate Stanko. We are stronger together, and it is going to take everyone working together, despite our differences, to get the best possible outcome for our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, so now we are going to move on to action items. The first one, do I have a motion to approve? We have the approval of student appointments to the Carroll County Career and Technology Education Advisory Council.
I move approval of those student appointments.
Dr. McCabe, did you have any comments?
Each semester, we recommend a student from each high school to serve on the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council. Students are nominated by their principal, and I am now recommending them for your approval.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Dr. Dorsey.
Dr. McCabe, in the past, we have read the names of the students, so I don't know whether you're prepared to do that tonight or not.
I certainly can do that, yes. John Adcock from Francis Scott Key High School for drafting, Jack Lauer, South Carroll High School for electrical construction, Lexie Melizo, Liberty High School, print production, Ben Phillips, Manchester Valley High School for masonry, Ananya Shaw, Century High School for Cisco, Jacob Spiegel, Westminster High School for welding, Olivia Shrine, Winters Mill High School for the TAM or the Teacher Apprentice Program.
Thank you. I always like to give them that recognition.
Any more comments or questions? All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Next, we have a ward of bids. Dr. McCabe, anything you can go over on that one?
Are you going to get up somebody to make a motion?
Yeah, let's make a motion.
Make a motion on them, sorry. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the bids.
Okay. Dr. Dorsey?
I'll second.
And Mr. Whistler?
There are five items on the award of bids this evening. The first three items are funded by the Food Services Program, and all are a part of the ongoing capital replenishment of the program. So again, these are all paid for internally by the Food Services Program. The first is a serving line at Tawnytown Elementary School. The second is a serving line at Eb Valley Elementary School, and third, a serving line at Winfield Elementary School. Next, we have arts and crafts supplies. This is a purchase list for arts and crafts supplies as needed for the next two years. And finally, we have a contract to purchase calculators as needed for the next two years. Questions?
Mr. Whistler?
Yes, thank you. I'm just, for item number four, arts and crafts supplies, I didn't notice a not-to-exceed amount, or curious if we have an amount?
It's not a not-to-exceed amount. It's like a bid list, so just as schools need those supplies, they would have to buy them from that list.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, so, and it's expected to be over 25,000, is that right? Is that why it's on this list?
Yes.
Okay. I just was curious if there was a not-to-exceed amount.
We're, as you'll see in a moment, we're sort of transitioning in that department. One of the things I put on my to-do list for the next fiscal year is for what I call pick lists or bid lists, to try to bring the Board on the cover sheet kind of what the history has been the last two or three school years, so you'd have a better sense of how many arts and crafts, how much have we spent on arts and crafts supplies in the last in the last two or three fiscal years? And you'll have that information on this sheet going forward.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Dr. Dorsey?
I was questioning number 10, Oriental Trading Company. Do we usually get them to offer bids or supply materials for the schools?
I honestly don't know, Dr. Dorsey. I have to research it and let you know.
Yeah, I was just surprised to see it. I don't know whether it's been there in the past or not, but it stood out to me this time.
I'll pull the last, the last bid issue and see if they were there then. I should stay here.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. So in the next one, the approval of construction and access easement agreement with town of Hampstead. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Whistler. And a second?
A second.
A second by Dr. Malvoe.
This is a standard easement agreement with the town of Hampstead to allow them to make improvements to the water treatment plant, which is near Hampstead Elementary
Board members, any questions or comments? Go ahead, Dr. Malvoe.
Just a minor statement. It says on here that this is adjacent to Hampstead Elementary School and that there's some safety and security measures intended to maintain separation of construction activities. What kind of, I'm just wondering if there's anyone here can talk about what kind of construction activities or things might possibly affect the school? What's the safety concerns? Is water pressure a problem? Anything like that at Hampstead Elementary as this goes on?
Sure. The, no, we don't expect an impact to the school from an operational standpoint, but what we wanted to make sure was that we had adequate construction fencing and dust protection, things like that. So when the kids are out in the playground, they don't get, well, dust and dirt blown on them and whatnot, any sort of interference that might occur due to deliveries, to whether it's transportation services or anything else like that. So there's that. There's also, with the construction fencing, we just want to make sure that, you know, if kids get curious, they have no means to get to the, get to the work site. So those are the things. And I think the language in there is sufficient where we have quite a bit of latitude to work with the town and also with the, with the contractors and to make sure that they're maintaining everything safely.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Next, we have personnel appointments. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Whistler. Dr. McCabe?
I have only two recommendations for appointment tonight. The first is Catherine Beakley, school psychologist in Baltimore County Public Schools, two school psychologists for us Student Services that would start in August. And the second one is Michael Myers, who currently works for us as a senior buyer in purchasing, to move to supervisor of purchasing.
Any comments or questions?
And Mr. Myers, his is effective 3/13.
Yes, his will not wait until August. That will be effective tomorrow.
Good.
Okay. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the last one for approval, may I have a motion to approve the Personnel Action Items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Whistler and second by Ms. Zimmer. Dr. McCabe?
For the monthly Personnel Action Items, there are one release from contract, one promotion, and two leaves of absence.
Any comments or questions? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and that concludes the action items. Next on the agenda is discussion. Dr. McCabe, I'll hand that over to you.
This is the discussion that comes every year at this time for the consideration of textbooks and instructional materials. As you know, our instructional materials go through, and textbooks, go through a review process. New materials are vetted through the Curriculum Council, which is a board-appointed committee, and are also available for the public to review prior to eventually coming to this board for approval. Tonight for discussion, we are providing materials that will be submitted to the Curriculum Council beginning in March. Materials will proceed through this process on a timeline to return to the board for action in June. During the month of May, all materials will be available for public review as well. Mr. Wernick is here for any questions or discussion.
Board members, does anyone have any questions, comments?
I see this will be presented to the council this week. Are you planning to be out in the community again this year with any of these?
Normally, I was in the community, and I only had two individuals show up that all, I was out for four nights, and they were actually individuals from our, our council, you know, who will be meeting on Friday. So we still had the day in April that anybody can come, that I'm available from 8 until 12, and that will be posted after we meet on this Friday to present it to Curriculum Council. But because we don't have a lot of books this year, and we aren't looking at a new reading series, I wasn't going to present out in the community.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
All right. And I do encourage the community to make sure they are participating and reviewing these items. It is a great opportunity to make sure you're informed and you're staying up to date on the curriculum that is being introduced.
And that was a reason why Mr. Wernick had made the opportunities available out in the communities, thinking that if parents are working and are still interested in seeing about these textbooks and materials, that maybe they could take advantage of attending one of those meetings. So it's a little disappointing, but, you know.
Understandable.
You're still making yourself available and having the materials available.
Absolutely. And anybody can come in, and we'll have information going out during the normal business hours within central office, that they can come in, and we reserve a room for them to look at the materials at any point during that time as well.
Thank you. Okay. I think that is everything, and it is almost 6:00. Look at that, we're doing good. All right. On Wednesday, April 2nd, at 6:00 PM, the superintendent will be holding a town hall in the cafeteria at the Career and Technology Center at 1229 Washington Road in Westminster. And we will be having our next board meeting with public participation on Wednesday, April 9th, 2025, at 4:00 PM here in the boardroom at 125 North Core Street in Westminster. Board members, may I please have a motion to adjourn? Dr. Dorsey. And a second by Ms. Zimmer. Thank you, everyone.